Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 6th Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. At 7 o'clock, we'll have citizens input. 7:05, Fire Chief Roger Hatfield, discuss Southeastern Regional Homeland Security Advisory Council Grants. 7:10, Michael Knight, discuss vote, release, all rights granted in the conveyance of easements and utilities. 7:15, Personnel and Training Policy Review, we'll have a discussion. 7:45, Selectmen's Update. 7:55, Town Managers' Update. 8:05, Assistant Town Managers' Update. We have a bunch of action items. And then at 8:20, after the regular session, we're going to go into executive session. Doc, can you read some of that?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Past 7:00, is anybody here for citizens input? I'd just like to read a letter that Bill received from the New England Patriots into the record. Obviously, we're all disappointed with the outcome on Sunday, but I do like to read this into the record. Dear Bill, On behalf of our family and entire New England Patriots organization, we would like to sincerely thank the Foxborough community for the overwhelming support and display of Patriots pride throughout the town in the weeks leading up to Super Bowl 52. We are sorry to disappoint our fans and sorry that we were not able to bring a sixth Lombardi Trophy home to Foxborough. Please know that we plan to do whatever we can to make sure we field a competitive team again next season. While we left Minnesota disappointed, we were uplifted to see all the photos and the Foxborough Cable Access video of the hometown rally held on the Common on Saturday, February 3rd. The enthusiasm of the crowd and the creativity of the signs were awesome and a wonderful reminder that we truly have the best fans in the NFL, and it starts right here in Foxborough, the home of Patriots Nation. Thank you to all who came out and supported us this season, especially at the hometown rally and outside the stadium, to welcome us home upon our return from Minneapolis. A special thank you to the organizers of the rally, Linda Walsh and Jim DeVellis, Paul Farmer for printing and designing many of the signs around the Common, and to the Board of Selectmen for proclaiming Sunday, February 4th, 2018, as New England Patriots Day in Foxborough. Your efforts and support mean so much to us. Thank you all from the bottom of our hearts. We have already begun working on the 2018 season, and we hope it will be another exciting year in Foxborough, as we are not done in our pursuit of a sixth Lombardi Trophy. Sincerely, Robert Kraft, Jonathan Kraft. Couple of thoughts. First, I'd just like to second, a special thank you to Linda, of course Jim, and Paul Farmer. It's not easy organizing stuff like that, and you guys just jumped in and you guys did a great job. And then, as far as the Krafts are concerned, they're part of this community. They've been here for over 24 years, and they spend as much time, if not more time, than a lot of us do. So, very nice letter from them, but if they're watching, they are one of us. So, congratulations on a great season, and we're all looking forward to next year. Okay. We've burned enough time. 7:05, discuss Southeastern Regional Homeland Security Advisory Council Grants. Chief Hatfield.
Good evening to all of you. In your package, you're going to find two actual grants that we've received. As most of you know, for the last few years, we've been working very, really hard to try to get some equipment and get some support from Homeland Security and from NEMA on preparing our community better for any type of large-scale situation that might occur. We finally have been able to catch their ear with a lot of support, and there's two projects that are in front of you. One is a kind of a cash shelter. It's not money. It's talking about equipment cash, and we're looking to put a 40-by-40 structure right behind the Public Safety Building. $55,000 funded from the actual grant, and Roger Hill and his people have been outstanding helping us prepare for this, as they've already put two of these structures up over at Public Works. This is a lot smaller than those two structures, but Roger's very, very, very much familiar with the type of structure it is and how to build it out. And his budget right now is showing that on our side, being, you know, work and some of the equipment that we're going to need, or supplies that we're going to need, is about $16,000. That I already had prepared in the emergency management component of our budget, so we definitely have the ability to make that project happen. There's other things that come with that, being emergency lighting plants along with sign boards that would be available to us to do whatever we have to do if we have a crisis. So, that's the first project. The second project is a mass casualty trailer, so that if we had a large-scale situation and we had to treat a lot of folks that were in dire need of preventing any blood loss, we would be able to actually take care of them. We have none of that available to us as of today. All the models that we've ever seen showing any type of situation that we might have up at Gillette, along with a school attack, along with a hospital attack, like everything else that we've been seeing nationwide and through the world, we wouldn't be able to be prepared for that, especially where we don't have any trauma centers nearby. So, this is a $40,000 trailer. We still need to supply it, but I've already got connections going with both, two divisions of OEMS and some other private entities to assist us in getting the equipment in this trailer. It's a long time coming. We've been working on this for a long time. I was shocked when I first got here, the little amount of support that we've gotten from NEMA and Homeland Security for a community that has the largest venue in the Commonwealth, and, you know, finally, a lot of people have come to bat for us, and we're finally seeing some support.
Roger, is this trailer strictly for Foxborough, or will it be available to the surrounding town?
It's majoritely, it's really majoritely for us, but it is an asset. So, mutual aid, like we do now, if somebody else has a crisis, we would respond with it, just like we would with anything for mutual aid.
So, in support of Roger's presentation tonight, this has been a long time coming. Roger, to his credit, and the department have been working a long time to try and get this secured for this region. There are a couple of regions around the Commonwealth that actually have this equipment, but we couldn't think of a better place to have it than right here in our own backyard, because, first of all, as Roger pointed out, it's the, as he points out, it's clearly a, it's one of the biggest venues in the entire Commonwealth, and certainly an area that could be of great assistance to other casualties, even in other areas, and assisting in providing support to communities in and around this region, if in fact, we needed to do, to find a place to house people during a major crisis. I'm really very pleased with the work that the group has shown to put this together, and like I said, it was no short effort to do it. It took a bit of time to try and pull it off. So, I'm very pleased that they've been able to be here to support their efforts in trying to get this going forward.
With the 40-by-40 canopy, you said, like banks and all that, so elaborate on what's going to be in this.
Okay, so, it's a 40-by-40 structure. We've already gone to the planning board. We've given them the initial view of what we're thinking and what we're looking at. They were, there was no questions. They were pretty supportive to it. We are finalizing that process by the two neighbors that are abutting it, inviting them to the final hearing. We've got all our paperwork in, and Deputy Chief Buckley's done an outstanding job doing all that planning component. And so, it's going to be green. It's not going to be white like what Roger Hill has, so it blends into the environment. And that has, right now, they have three lighting, brand spanking new lighting plants, generators down in the, at the Cape for this site, along with three sign boards. Those are like the large sign boards that we see on Route 1 during football games, but these will be utilized for emergencies only. It's not going to be, you know, supplanting any of that type of activity. It's only if we have a crisis. So, if we have a crisis, we'll be able to control the traffic flow in town, along with diverting traffic as we feel we need to, if we have that type of situation. And again, it's not just for a one-dimensional site, you know, like Gillette. It's if we have any crisis in the community. We might have an emergency water break, and we'll be able to use this equipment to support us to deal with that.
What other type of equipment do you see going in there in the future?
Well, right now, we do have a regional shelter trailer that we got right after 2010, when we had our shelter. We've got that. So, that will be located there. This new mass casualty trailer will be located there. There might be an additional traffic control trailer, and I think ultimately, when it's all said and done, there might be as much as five lighting plants and five sign boards. I don't believe it will ever be any more than that. We feel that with what we have in the structure and the larger trailers being parked, we probably only would take up about three or four of those spots that are in that parking lot. We've talked to Vince, that has kind of like the rights to that parking lot. He has absolutely no problem with that. And it's tucked away in that corner near the walkway that we're, it's kind of secluded, but we can keep a good eye with the cameras on it for security.
So, the grant is for the actual structure, and then you have 16 grand in your budget?
For the blocks, for the foundation, you know, all the work that Roger's going to do if we need to bring any fill in. He'll use some of that hard pack from when they actually resurface all the pavement.
So, will Roger's team physically?
They're going to be working with us.
Put it up?
Yeah. I think what they're going to do, they'll do the site prep, and then it's basically a contract to get the structure and have it installed. I don't believe they install it. I think they do all the work up to the installation.
So, is the installation?
The grant covers all that.
The grant covers the installation?
Yeah.
Okay. Question on the trailer. I noticed in the documents, it said it would have a dedicated truck. Do we have a truck?
We do. We do. What we did is, knowing that this was coming, when we replaced the old pickup truck, I had it, I had a utility body put on it, so that we could have it for that purpose of taking care of this equipment. So, that's already been done.
Okay.
Like I said, this has been years in the works, and so, we've been preparing for it slowly.
Roger, what's the expected useful life of the structure? Any idea?
That's a Roger Hill question. But, you know, I know Roger is a big believer of it, and I listen to him.
The reason why I ask is, it's great that we have the grant.
Yeah.
I think it's based on the venues. It's probably not a bad thing to have, especially in the world that we live in today. But there's going to be ongoing maintenance.
Yeah.
I'll make sure we think about that and we budget accordingly. Expected useful life replacement. And there is a regional need. Is there any way to leverage any resources on a regional basis to help support some of the ongoing maintenance and equipment needs, or is it just, we're going to do it, and if you need it, we're here for you, and that's it?
I would speculate the answer is yes, absolutely. Serpide, being the Southeastern, has this material, you know, Homeland Security Group. Serpide has made a commitment to three sites. Their number one site was in Bridgewater. It's in the center of their district. It's a very, it's their largest site. Then they have one in the Cape, to the southern, the southern part of their district, and we're the northern district. So, I would speculate by their efforts and what they've been working on for the last five years, it's their, it's their plan, that they will always be supportive of these three sites and taking care and maintaining those sites.
Are the other two sites in existence now?
Yeah, we're the last one.
How long have the buildings been up in New York?
So, Bridgewater's probably been up three years, and the one on the Cape was an existing site that was there for their, the principal fire training ground, and I think that what they did is they gave them more equipment to support that site that's already there with that same type of structure.
Are they supplying the equipment?
Yes. That's above and beyond the structure. That's already, that's a different. Now, again, that's a good question, because I haven't gotten any paperwork on it. I know that there's three sign boards and three lighting plants, so there might be another grant coming for me to accept those, and I'll be in front of you for those two.
Any other questions?
Ask and answer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, we can take these two action items.
All righty then. Move to accept a grant gift donation to Foxborough Fire Rescue of one medium-sized canopy PVC shelter structure with insulation and electrical components worth $55,000 from the Southeastern Regional Homeland Security Advisory Council.
Second. What she made second, any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Move to accept a grant gift donation to the Foxborough Fire and Rescue of a 24-foot large-scale regional EMS response mass casualty trailer worth $40,000 from the Southeastern Regional Homeland Security Advisory Council.
Second. What she made second, any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, 7:00, a little after 7:15. Michael Knight, discuss vote, release, all rights granted in this conveyance of easements and utilities.
So, by way of introduction, I'll try and give you a brief overview of the situation that we have on this one. Michael came to us last, sometime last week, to indicate that they're trying to dispose a piece of new property that are trying to, are you the seller of the property or the owner?
I'm the seller.
You're the seller of the property, that's right. So, where they tried to sell the property, where there is a easement over the property for a subdivision that was actually never built. So, the only way that that can actually, that the town can actually, that the easement actually be removed is by having a vote of the Board of Selectmen to remove it since the subdivision was never built. We have a, we did have a, the planning board did actually move, take it under their advisement at their last meeting, and they actually agreed with the actions being taken by the Board tonight as well. So, without further attention to detail, I'll turn it over to Mike, maybe he'll offer a little bit more insight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Knight. I'm attorney in Mansfield. I was characterized very well. That's what's going on there. My client is Mr. Thomas McGovern and his wife bought a parcel of land at 96 Belcher Road, and they were planning on building a subdivision there. It never happened, and Ms. Lynch McGovern passed away in 2012, and my client now has a license to sell and is planning to sell it and has a buyer. It's already willing, the buyer is ready, willing, and able, and we just have to clear up some of these easements that were given to the subdivision, but, which has since lapsed. So, I've gone to the Conservation Commission. We've got the, we've got that going through, we have the planning board, I need the Board of Selectmen, and I need to deal with Verizon and Mass Electric, and it's all in works. So, this is just one more step. So, there is nothing built on the property. There was nothing there. The easements, I think, I'm sure, were for sewage and roadways, which don't exist. I just need it cleared up, and then you can sell it.
We actually do have a form of release that the board will have, and it's things to sign tonight, but we would need a vote of the board to actually take action to enact that.
Once the land is sold, they're going to have to come back and get the easements again anyway?
If they have it developed that way.
The new developer, I'm sure he's planning on doing something similar, but that's up to, you know.
So, this just wipes it clean?
It wipes it clean. I have to give them a clean.
Starts with a clean slate.
Their title.
If we're going to vote on the affirmative, can I suggest two conditions? There's nothing in our packets for any plan that went there. It was just an easement. I'd like to see a plan that has a subdivision. Where is it? What the date of the acceptance and approval was? If you don't have it now, but as a condition. And the second condition is, you know, other meetings are not televised, so if the planning board did in fact approve this in our package next week, could we get them?
It is in your package.
The minutes from the planning board?
There is a, an email from the, from the board, it's in the attachment, Jim.
I see the deed.
And there's a second one from Gabby Jordan that says, "At the Planning Board Meeting Held on January 25th."
Oh, no, I got that from Gabby. I want a copy of the minutes and the discussion, and if there's any
Okay.
...conditions on there. It's just, if we're going to vote on something by other boards,
Sorry.
I just want that in our record.
No problem.
So, I did get, I have it.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure we had that.
Yep.
I don't, but how do we want to proceed with that? If we're going to vote on it?
Well, without that information, can't take a vote.
Well, if you want to do it.
Can't condition something without the information. So, I would rather just get the information and vote on it, keep it clean. Having said that, I'm confident the planning board voted on it.
Mm-hmm.
But I would, I just never vote on something unless, like, I don't even know what part of town this is in. You know, I don't know.
Beltway.
It's off of Belcher Road.
It's Belcher Road. Yeah. Kind of way to the corner of east.
The size of it, those easements that encumbered the property, are there any value to the town, even though it wasn't built?
We actually reviewed this internally as well with our staff, and everybody agreed that this was the right action to take.
Okay. It's good for the staff, but you're asking the board to vote. I'm not being adversarial, but I don't have anything from the staff. The planning board meetings aren't televised. We've got a letter, you know, a reference to a mass law, but it'd be nice to see where this plan is in town. That's all I'm asking.
So, I don't know if the Form K, the lot release from the planning board, was included in the, in the packet. This is what was signed off on by the planner.
I don't think I saw that form, so.
Okay. I could give you a copy.
You want to just provide that to the board, or?
Yes.
That would give them at least an indication that
Yep.
...that they all signed off on it. Yep. I don't think that was actually provided to us.
Covenant secures the completion of the approved definitive subdivision plan.
So, that had to be back in the day, right?
Well, it was never.
It was like 2006. I think it was approved.
Plan was in 2006. Correct. The easements, your easements were in 2007.
Do you happen to have a plan with you that reflects that?
Have the plan, no.
So, this is a subdivision that was?
I can, might be able to get it from planning.
That was never built.
But, just run upstairs.
Let me see. That was done. Yeah. Planning released it. And looking at the easement. Gives the town perpetual rights to construct, inspect, repair, remove, replace, operate, forever maintain sanitary sewers with any manholes, pipes, conduits, and other, parentheses, pipes, conduits, and their parentheses for the conveyance of water in a covered surface and groundwater drain. So, basically, this is giving the town the ability to go on your property and make any repairs.
Roadways and sewer.
Right.
Drainage.
And none of this was built?
Correct.
And the planning board has released?
That's correct.
And? The subdivision.
Correct. And there was some order of conditions, order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, which is, I'm certain, we've signed off on next week at their meeting. We've already spoken to them. There are, there was nothing to complete.
I know this is a timing issue, but we're the last ones
Correct.
...that should be signing off on this. You know, to Jim's point, we shouldn't be signing off on, on the release of easements until all the other boards have signed off. When is, when do you anticipate getting the rest of the sign-offs?
Well, the utility companies are notoriously slow to react.
Right. I mean, they're, I get that, but the other, the other boards that we have.
Actually, the Conservation Commission is all set to go. It needs a signature from the treasurer. We've spoken to the treasurer. There's some back taxes that are owed. She doesn't usually sign off on that until the taxes are paid. She's willing to wait to sign until the closing, whereupon the taxes are paid. She spoke with the seller, and she's confident that he's going to pay. It's coming out of the proceeds of the sale. So, the buyer is willing to wait for the actual signature of the copies. We put it on record the day of closing, when the taxes are paid.
So, how far are the back taxes owed? How many years?
You know, I don't know exactly how many years, but I can tell you the amount. It's about $54,000, and, which was surprising to me at the time. I think that's a lot of interest.
If this is going forward, this is a no vote for me. Pay the bill, pay the taxes, and we can release it. It's a no-brainer from my side.
Right.
It's only a three lots subdivision.
But it's $54,000 in back taxes?
Yeah. They can't release it until they pay it off, so.
My point is, pay off the taxes, then come and we'll release it. We've been through this before in other developments in the last minute.
Yeah. We already said that we would not release them, and we've already made that stipulation, that we would not release it to them until, we were getting all the approvals, and then they would release it. It's a matter of time, but we've.
It's right. It's going to be done time.
Yeah, but my point is, we're not, we're not, over the years, we're financing this. We're not a bank. Pay the taxes, then come in front of this, in my opinion, then pay the, come in front of the board to release whatever reasons we have over it. I can't see any other way to do this.
It sounds like it's unclear. Like, have, did the Conservation meet on this and discuss it and vote?
Conservation hasn't acted on it yet.
Yeah, so, like, to Jim's point, we can't vote on something if.
Well, it wouldn't be a full release. It's just one piece of a release process, so.
So, I have.
Is the board, but is the board the final, the final?
No. The final was if all the, if all the boards sign off. Planning board signed off first. You brought it to us. You don't want the easement tonight, so I can't, I brought it to you.
So, I have, I have no problem having a special meeting to resolve this, okay? So, it doesn't have to wait until the next, next board meeting. But I want to see the Conservation sign off, and I want to see the taxes paid.
Maybe we lease it and reverse the taxes.
So, hi. We had a conference with the seller and the buyer's attorney and Bill, and, you know, where this has gone on long enough, we want to get our taxes paid. We want the tax title paid off. I am holding any signed document. I'm not signing off on anything till I have a bank check in my hand. I will release the conservation certificate. I won't release anything. They can't do anything until they have the certificates. I'm holding them in escrow until I get that money. Then they will receive all the signed documents. That way, I guarantee the town gets their money. Everything gets paid.
Right.
And all the documents get released. No documents get released until.
We get, the town gets paid.
Until the town gets paid.
It's, that was our intention, Laura. It's a simultaneous thing.
Right.
As we get the funds at the closing and instantaneously gets paid off.
It's.
I understand that, and I have all the faith that you're going to hold this piece of paper till you get the bill. How long is, how long have they been in the rears?
So, this particular property, it's actually started out as three parcels. So, there's three parcels. Two have been in since 2012. When Mrs. Lynch passed away, that's when the things kind of got hairy, and then one since 2014, vice versa. So, it's been three years, but like we said, Mrs. Lynch passed away. There was a lot of.
Well, it's, yeah, just the estates.
Involved in this property. So, the assessors now made it one parcel for fiscal 18, so it's all going to get paid, you know, $55,000 in pocket. Everything signed off is much better than, you know, waiting for the person to come up with $55,000. Then, you know, this is a particular instance. We don't do it all the time. We don't want to do it all the time, but in this particular instance, this is the best way we can see possible to get the taxes and everything signed off, by holding these, these documents in escrow until I receive the payment.
Would, would the purchaser be willing to provide a letter of credit?
I'm not certain.
It's not, it's not that we don't have full faith in you. It's just, we need something that, some sort of document that says, okay, this is guaranteeing that the taxes will be paid regardless, because if that, if that deal, I mean, it's possible that that deal could fall through.
Then you tear up that signed-off easement, I would think.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't give it to them until that happens. Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't give it to him until that happens.
File the easement, you don't file the paperwork for that, that's, taxes paid, we're holding everything in escrow, the, all the documents in order before we release anything.
That's correct, that was my understanding as well.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've conferred that with, confirmed that with Frank Spillane too, who's also the closing attorney for the, for the buyer.
For the buyer.
And he's, he's in full agreement with that. In fact, he's, you know, he said that's normal, how, normally how it's done, you hold everything until everything's paid. And then, you know, so, so I don't want to mix up the two, I mean, I think that what we're trying to do with, is this is one step in the, in the approval process. We cannot move forward to the next process until, to the closing process, until, until all the boards have signed off. So it's just a matter of order and how this happened, the planning board was first, you happened to be second, Conservation will be, is, is on their agenda, I think, for next week.
So to Jim's point, I mean, you don't want the selectmen to sign until Conservation is signed, taxes are paid and, and all that, so is there a way?
Well, is there any particular reason why?
Cause I was thinking about selling my house in two years, so I'm not gonna pay taxes till I sell it and then you'll get, the town will get the money, it's as simple as that. I've been through this before with, with different developers, they come in at the last second before a town meeting. You know, they, they wouldn't be here unless we had something that they needed, which was encumbrances on their property.
Okay.
So if the market's good, I'm not in, um, you know, if they want to put a three lot or a five lot subdivision, I'm not in love with more housing coming in. But pay the bill, we'll sign it off, if you can do it without us, so be it, but I'm not gonna, you know, the plans and easements, I, I, that's fine, the, the planning board signed off the Conservation. But there's no way I'm gonna sign this if there's taxes due, because it's not fair to everyone else that pays their taxes. And the market's gone up and up and up, and people have enjoyed this, holding on to this property without paying taxes.
So I guess, I'm just wondering how that, that works though in terms of a closing, a legal closing, I don't think you can do that closing until you actually, until, until the, the board releases it, correct? You can't, you can't do it.
That's why I suggested a letter of credit.
Right, my client doesn't have the funds to pay the taxes right now, he needs it to, obviously he needs to sell the property. I think if we speak to the buyer's attorney, if they know that it's gonna be signed off on at the closing, then I'm sure they'll, they'll do that.
So that would be.
What we can't do is have them, have it not signed off after we close, because I'm giving them a piece of property without, with a lien on it.
You'll not have to close with, on a cover title.
But if it's, if it's coming, we'll have the, we'll have it paid off and we can just solve.
We've, we've been through, uh.
Sure.
You know, this before, I mean, there's a notorious developer in town that wouldn't pay his taxes, then he had a development and was always pending, you know, paying his taxes and.
Stood.
Miraculously show up at the last minute with his, with his, with his check.
Right.
And, and to Jim's point, I mean, people can just sit on the taxes and so if, if we can get a letter of credit or a bond or, or something, that'll guarantee payment.
Thank you for clarifying, because I, I've never had that experience, the, the similar experience that you've had here, but, um, so I guess what they're looking for is some assurance that the taxes will be paid, or are paid before they release, they, they, they offer full release. So if there's a way, a way of offering a letter, a letter of credit or to, to the board, I think that would, that would that be sufficient to the boards for doing that?
I think, I think.
You may get the board vote, I'm adamant about, put the money in the, back to the town before we sign it off and, um, there's probably not much more you can say, I know, I know you do very.
We have a lien on the property, so we're protected, so we do have a lien on the property, so, you know, they're paying sixteen percent interest, we have a lien, so we're protected that way.
And it, and it can't be, and it can't be cleared until they pay it.
We're not gonna release the lien until we get paid, so we also have another step in your process that I have to make sure that the money, the funds clear and they get the paperwork and then, then I sign the release on the lien, so we have another level of protection.
So I would, I would bring this to a vote with a letter of credit. Okay?
From the buyer?
From the buyer.
Somebody who's gonna be responsible for paying the back taxes. Okay, whether it's the seller or the buyer, I don't care, it's immaterial to me.
It'll probably be the buyer in this instance, because it'll effectively be paid at the, at the, at the closing.
It will be coming from the buyer's.
Right.
Funds that he provides, right.
They want to reduce the sale price by fifty-four thousand dollars and.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
I understand.
Like I said, I have no problem calling a special meeting, so you don't have to wait until the next board of selectmen cycle, but we want to see that.
Understood. What's up? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Twenty-five minutes to eight o'clock. Personnel and training policy review. I guess that's you, Mayor, huh?
Yes, so if you, um, could refer to, uh, we have a town of Foxborough employee training summary in your board docs, it's a spreadsheet, it might be going the wrong way, if you click on the little arrow icon, it'll go the right way. So there's three little things at the top, um, one that looks like a circular arrow, if you click on that, it'll go the right way. So I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to update you on our policy and training. This chart in front of you shows, uh, current progress on policy development and training and, uh, it shows the history since 2014. I wanted to just give you a brief history, when I was hired at the end of 2014, I was charged with the task of assessing our HR needs, centralizing the HR function. The town's employee landscape had changed significantly upon my arrival, uh, before my arrival, there were three new collective bargaining groups in place of the original group of employees that were originally covered by the personnel bylaw, so that included, we had a new dispatch union and two steelworker groups. There were, uh, some workplace culture issues that we inherited. So in order to address all of these things, the first step we took was to do an audit. Uh, we, the audit, um, showed that we were missing some basic workplace policies, uh, most processes were not defined, they were just, this is the way we always did it. And we were open to a lot of risk. So we proceeded to develop policies, processes and procedures and communicate them to gain buy-in. The way we did this is we reconvened the personnel board, they had been defunct for a couple of years. With the personnel board and HR council, we created a new personnel bylaw, uh, that was approved at a town meeting. And we began, uh, creating policies to address gaps, uh, correct some of our current practices and to build the basic must-have policies. We ran the drafts by the department head group to kind of get a feel for it, uh, we convened the non-union employees and we bounced it off the operations group. We, um, at personnel board will, if you recall, will chunk a couple of policies together and come and present to you for adoption and the town manager for signature and approval. Once approved, we systematically introduced the new policies, um, as proposals during our bargaining sessions. So for example, at the last steelworker negotiations, we brought to them the workplace violence policy, the social media policy, the code of conduct policy. So once the unions have impact bargained those, um, we set up training dates and implementation schedules concurrent with our policy distribution. So if you look at the, the table here, this is a summary of the significant training and policy initiatives, there are some tiny one-off trainings that I didn't list on here, just because I wanted to keep it on one page. And just to tell you, just from my experience in, um, HR, both private sector, academic and public sector, this is a very nuts and bolts approach. It's, uh, an old-fashioned kind of approach, but it does follow recommended best practices in municipal HR. It's based on legal advice and HR industry standards and it's necessary risk management tool to train employees instead of just handing out a pile of policies, having them sign them, read them and sign them, it really doesn't give you much meaning. So we're trying to have meaning and impact by training people, it's also part of our onboarding packet for new employees. You know, we hope that perhaps going forward, we can begin to utilize some online training when we get a new updated, modernized website. We're hoping that we have an intranet so that employees can log on, you know, on an annual basis and check off on their ethics, check off on their sexual harassment training and all of that. But we don't have an intranet right now, we don't have a vehicle for doing that. But I think, just in kind of retrospect, as you look at our, I, I believe that we've accomplished a good amount of the, um, required policies, you know, ongoing, we're doing darkness to light, we've completed workers comp training, um, quarry policy, ethics, anti-harassment and discrimination prevention, a vehicle policy, public records training. Uh, we've done a mindfulness, uh, customer service training for library employees, a strategic planning exercise with library. We've done, we've completed workplace violence, customer service excellence, um, now doing performance evaluation training. Uh, we have a code of conduct civility training scheduled for June, um, so boards and committees can participate. And we're gonna re, uh, renew the anti-harassment and discrimination policy, it's time to retrain on that, as well as we'll be bringing you a new quarry policy next, at the next selectmen's meeting, because it was time to update that. So I think if you survey our employees, the in-person trainings have been really productive for us in a variety of ways. Not only do employees understand the policy they're signing, but they're learning the process for how to recognize and report behaviors. It brings groups of employees together that, um, don't always meet, so we had room, a roomful of people here that were from DPW, Council on Aging, people who, Town Hall, people who might not ever work together. It created a really good interaction with the presenters, uh, to ask questions. And like, at the end of any given policy, workplace violence, for example, there was a line of people wanting to talk to Jack Dillon and the police chief, like asking questions. And I think having clearly defined, defined policies and accepted guidelines has had a positive impact on our workplace culture, before people didn't know what the rules were. And it was kind of a culture of, you know, there's a policy there, no one ever, you know, there may, may not be a policy, but people never knew what they were. So I think, um, there were some very positive unintended consequences of these trainings we've, we've held and we look forward to the next, um, round of trainings that we're gonna be doing. But I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank you for letting us present this at a board of selectmen meeting, you know, it's an unusual opportunity, because these are the operational processes that we use, that we do every day. There are so many other areas of HR that we, you know, do on an operational basis, like recruitment, um, employment practices, performance and employee development, risk management, classification, compensation. So we're proud of the work we've done to centralize these processes and professionalize the HR function and reduce the town's risk in employment matters. So happy to do future presentations on any of these, uh, function areas of HR, but, um, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about the current policies or training.
Processes.
I have, I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
I think one of the biggest ones is, why do, why do some policies take like no time to roll out and train, and other policies take extended periods to, to roll out?
That, that's a great question, um, so for example, a quarry policy, there's no statutory training requirement, I'm the person, because I do quarry, that has to be trained, or the COA director, we have to undergo training, so that's just an employment. When we make a conditional offer of employment to a new employee, we do a quarry, um, and when our employees deal with vulnerable populations, they need to be quarried. So something like that wouldn't need training or rollout, however, something like sexual harassment, you are required by law to do training. Every, you know, I believe it's on a three-year cycle, so we, and every year you're required to hand out the policy, so something like that, that's significant. And a really important workplace issue, we've even edited our policy receipt to say not only I've, I've attended training or I understand the policy, we say, do you understand the sexual harassment policy as stated? Can you tell us if you feel that you've been a victim of sexual harassment, so that would then cause another investigation? Do you understand how to report based on this policy? So those kind of things, you can't ask those questions if you just hand out a policy, we need to do the training. So significant things like workplace violence, code of conduct, um, social media, because it transcends every aspect of our work now, those are important ones to train and make sure people understand and recognize and report and all of those things.
One of the other aspects of that is that every one of the workplace type of, of, of policies that impact the, the terms and conditions of employment are required to be negotiated, you know, negotiate the impacts with each and one, each and one of the, each one of the union, collective bargaining units. So we have to meet with each one of the units and go through it with them, and I get, answer any of their concerns or responses that they may have to, to the, to the policy itself. They, if, if there are aspects of the policy that they're uncomfortable with, we, we go through it and then understand if there's, if we have to tweak the policy a little bit to, to make it, you know, more comfortable for them, to make that work. It takes time to do that and it's usually done, um, it's, it's done either congruent with the, with the collective bargaining process or outside of the collective bargaining process. Either way, it takes several meetings to get that completed. So that usually is one of the biggest delays in getting stuff done, anything that doesn't require collective bargaining gets rolled out rather quickly, um, in, in training. But it's the other ones that, that require, uh, a process to have, that we have to go through.
Just a follow-up on that one? If we go into a different topic and then. So chairman brought up the, the process. And you brought up the code of conduct, so I, I, just for full disclosure, I had a meeting with Rebecca, with Rebecca. Mary Beth and Bill, uh, and there was a disagreement, we, we completely were on different sides on one topic and I, Bill had suggested I bring it back to the chair for discussion. So I didn't ask for this topic to be on here, but it's, it's timely. So you, you look at the code of conduct and, and the code of conduct policy was brought to us in June.
Mm-hmm, June twenty-first, you signed it.
And it's scheduled to be rolled out in June of 2018, so one full year. So if you look at the code of conduct, they have three or four terms on civility, integrity, respect, ethics, communications and teamwork. Like short paragraphs for each one, and then one on enforcement that basically says, uh, it's expected that everyone will abide by this and it'll be enforced. And then one short sentence says, uh, employees shall report violations, and it's a signature on it. So this was, this was brought to the selectmen in June, we signed it and then town manager signed it, went on the website. There's a, there's an expectation that it's a policy now, since it's on our website and it's, we voted on it. So between last June and this June, is it a policy or is it not a policy?
It's not a policy that we can enforce as of yet, because we, we have, you were, actually the signing, signing of the policy is the first step in the process. We've, we've internally discussed the fact we shouldn't put it on, on the website, not until it's fully rolled out to everybody. And the reason why we, we don't want to do that is because it's a little bit misleading, that we're actually enforcing that policy at this point in time. So we've, we've discussed that and we've since taken it down.
So we're free to roll it out to the non-union employees and the seasonal employees, but it was a conscious dis- discussion with HR council whether you can roll it out to one group and hold them accountable and not the other group. So we want to do it as a blanket, the other thing is.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to tell you, so when personnel board discussed these all in a group, um, the code of conduct policy refers back to both the sexual, the anti-harassment discrimination policy and also the workplace violence policy. So council, who did the workplace violence training, suggested that you needed these other policies in place before you could, this is sort of the icing on the top of all of them to have the code of conduct. So we had to roll out anti-harassment legally required, workplace violence, which we just did, customer service, which we are in the process of rolling that up, and then he felt code of conduct was the next consecutive one.
So, so between June and June of 2018, granted it shouldn't have been on the website, but, you know, these are as good as until tested, right?
Yeah.
So we had an issue come up. And it was looked into and this wasn't even considered because it wasn't trained yet.
Right.
Okay? So my question is, it, so this is one policy that out of all of them, you know, the some that are mandated by the state, the some just employees. This is mandatory, all the boards and committees and town employees, so advisory committee, selectmen, we all have to go through this, okay? So in that time that we sign it until now, when it was presented to us, I think Tracy Vasili presented it with two other ones and she recommended September. So now we have a sheet that, until this got brought up at the last meeting to give a, I didn't know it wasn't implemented, I didn't know it was gonna take a year, I didn't know it was very complicated on a civility that we have to train people on being civil. So what do we tell, in the same discussion we had, when someone comes in and complains that, um, that this was in violation and the town says. that, that this was in violation, and the town says, well, we haven't been trained on civility, so we can't even look at it. One, it's a little disheartening. Two, it's a little disingenuous for this board to have something up for a year. And I just want to be clear, so between June and now, nobody's been trained on this, nobody's signed off on it, nobody's been given this policy?
Well, here's the thing, I mean, policies aren't in place to catch somebody, policies are in place to...
Well, even more, even more important...
My, my one question, has anyone been held to this? Has anyone been given this to sign?
The answer is no, there is no, 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 not, not as of yet.
And the reason...
Because we, we still have to negotiate all those, that policy.
Not with, not with advisory committee members, us?
No, absolutely. But the employees go first, they, all the collective bargaining units have to go first.
Okay.
And then we, and then we roll it out to the boards and committees.
So, department heads that are not unionized?
Mm-hmm.
There's no representation from the union?
I know, but we don't want to hold, we don't want to put a policy in place that it, it creates an us against them thing. This group is held accountable to the policy, and this group isn't. That's why we're rolling it out to boards, committees, and employees, all at the same time. And as I said, the, our HR council said, to have a civility policy, it's the golden standard. The reason I put it on the website, maybe I'm wrong, is because I'm the chair of a municipal personnel association that covers 350 cities and towns. We are the gold standard. I have shared this with more than 40 communities, that we have the foresight to create the policy. However, in order to have, you know, employees, in fairness to them, to be held to these policies, they have to have the very basic things. Harassment and violence both refer back to this policy, and customer service. Before you can have civility, we wanted to train people in customer service as well. And now, with all those things in place, this is the next significant training we're going to do. It wasn't, it wasn't kicked under the desk or anything like that.
Well, let me, it's really important to know that not everybody has a civility policy. This is actually a step higher than most places even have.
It's the gold standard.
It is, it's the highest standard you can possibly do.
So, my, so, one of my concerns are, are we putting so much in here? I don't think, you know, and I, and like I said, I mean, I'm not micromanaging. I can't think of a more simple policy, reading this, that you can't hand it to somebody that says, be civil, and sign it. Because the, the standards around here are black and white. For this to take one year, are we doing something, are we doing too much, trying to do too much too soon? If this was presented to us last June and said it's going to take a year, I think that would have been a good discussion to have.
Yeah, and that's our fault for not telling you that.
Yeah, and keep in mind, we're trying to correct the sins of many, many years by putting in place...
This has never been, never been in place at all.
The policies that were legally required, and then, this is a gold standard policy, and we're, we're excited to implement it, but I don't think you can implement it before you're ready, before you touch on all the basics. You can't harass, you can't discriminate, you can't, you know, you know, have violence in the workplace. All of those things.
It's a ladder, it's a ladder of the process.
This is, this is the icing. And, and it's a great accomplishment to even have one of these, and I appreciate that you guys approved it when you did, and, I mean, and if this is all we did, if we had a training and development department that just did this all day, sure, we would have done this quicker.
So, if there's a complaint against civility, I guess this was my issue, is it goes nowhere till this policy's signed. There's no looking at anything that has this, because I'm looking at that one example.
Yeah, so, so I'm happy, I'm happy to talk about that. So, so the question then becomes, you know, are there any legal standards beyond that? And the answer is no. I mean, because the only other legal standards there are, are the ones that we've already approved. So...
I'm not sure we're saying legal.
So, the anti-discrimination policy, the workplace violence policy, those are legal standards that, that are actually in place in most communities in Massachusetts.
You're, you're looking at all the other ones. I'm looking at one, one policy that says a civil.
But the civility policy is the next level, Jim, and that's what I'm trying to say to you, is that in order to have the work, those other, in order to get to the civility policy, you have to have those others in place. You still have to negotiate the impact, because it's still subject to interpretation from everybody, every unit that, that we have out there, which means that they have to be clear about what the expectation is, and what, and what the standards are before they agree to it. And so, if we have that clear understanding, and they sign off on it, and, and, and then something comes along, we have the ability to, to take appropriate action. The problem is, I think the, the difference that we're dealing with here is that we didn't have any standards. So, I guess the question is...
Bill, that's not true. That is not true.
Well, no, but, well, let me say, you didn't have...
You know, we had Bill, we had Mr. Gaylor, who had standards, you might not agree with him, but don't say we didn't have standards.
Well, you didn't have, you didn't have, you didn't have personnel standards that were, that were written down as policies, because we couldn't find any. So, I guess my point is that you had a personnel policy, absolutely, everybody had a personnel policy. The question is, do you, standards of conduct are different. So, I guess what we're trying to do is professionalize the, the workforce in addition to train them properly so that the expectation levels are high. And, and you know something? So far, it's worked really, really well. And I, and I guess what my, the point is, and Mary Beth said it, we're not creating policies so that we can just point fingers at people. I think what the, the purpose of creating the policy and the standard is so that people understand what their expectations are. And so, when they come to work here, there is a high standard.
And I think that's why a lot of people want to work here. And it's also to mitigate risk, to protect, you know, the town. So, I think...
But my expectation is, when we hire somebody, they're civil. They don't need a policy. Granted, I'm oversimplifying it, but to hang your hat on a policy that takes a year to get to, and then something comes along, and you can't even evaluate it because it's not a policy yet, the people that we hire, I think we should have more expectations that they can meet this walking in the door.
And we do. I mean, there's, there's, there's insubordination and, and performance and all those things that with, a lot of towns don't have even a policy like this, and you can still discipline and coach performance based on someone with a bad attitude or something like that. You don't need this policy to do that. The, the thing with this policy is, we didn't even get it, we, we started with negotiations with our biggest group, the two steelworker groups, and it was signed off in November. So, that's where, you know, we're, we're just picking up now and completing the other trainings, and, and we decided, let's schedule when all the new boards and committees are appointed. We have a date in June where we're hoping to roll out a lot of things, ethics, things, so it can be a refresher for existing elected and appointed folks, and it can be sort of a introduction to new elected and appointed folks. And at the same time, employees will do the training as well. I, I mean, I apologize for the miscommunication, that's why this was a great opportunity for discussion, to be able to roll out where we've come, how far we've come with policies. I think that, you know, there's certainly more work to be done, but given the, the workload of what we've had to do since we did that first audit back in 2014, I think we've checked off, you know, 90% of the boxes of things we've wanted to do. There's certainly work to still be done, because the environment's always changing.
So, and I'll try to, and this is my last question. So, if someone comes in and complains about something that's in violation of this, what's the response, what has been the response over the year, other than that one instance that we're talking, we, we can't look at it?
We, we really haven't had one, we haven't had one.
There've been no employees that this has been addressed to at all?
We've had situations where I think we've, we've evaluated workplace violence, and, and even harassment, for that matter, we've looked at those too. We've looked at both those situations, but, and dealt with them accordingly, but these are, this, we've not had anybody come in and say that it is a violation of, of the, of the code of conduct. Like I said, the code of conduct is, is the, is the highest standard, and, and again, it's a process, it's, 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 it's a, it's a, it's sort of like climbing a ladder. We're at the, we're at the three-quarter part of the ladder, we're, we're trying to get to the very top. And that's, that's it.
One of the interesting things, too, to let you know, when, when we do the training, and this happened in the community I worked in previously, and I'm certified as an MCAD trainer, so I've done anti-harassment in other organizations, and every time you roll out a policy and you do the training, the number of reported incidents goes up, and you end up with a lot of investigations. I'm happy to say that when we did the training here, we had a much less percentage of people coming forward with the what-ifs, and I think this was, and, and luckily, we had, you know, professional people delivering the training, and we were able to investigate and answer those things. But it's certainly not a red flag when you get reports of that, but it's really helpful for people to say they understand the policy, they can ask questions, they can recognize now the behaviors. So, I feel like, I feel good presenting this to you today, that we've accomplished what we've accomplished.
Thank you.
Thanks.
How often, or what's your goal, to do policy updates that are not state mandated? Is it as needed, is it when there's a, when there's a problem and you have to review it, or is it going to be, every, is it going to be on a cycle?
It'll be ongoing.
Yeah, so we keep in touch with, you know, legal requirements, like we've been notified that the quarry policy has changed. So, we met tonight Personnel Board, this was two meetings we've spent on the quarry policy, and we'll be bringing you the revised quarry policy at the next meeting on February 20th to look at. We've met about the, having a mandated reporter in order to go along with our darkness-to-light training. The group met about that, has looked at some older policies that were drafted. They wanted to see what happened with the legislation, because, you know, the understanding is that what's been submitted might come back a little different, so to write a policy that doesn't meet the terms of the legislation, that, that's what they're waiting on, on that. But we're continually looking for best practices in, you know, what policies are needed. I think the next big one is social media, but it's been agreed that when our website is late coming out the new website, and the best time in the world to do that is when we train on the capabilities of the new website, and we have everybody sign off on the social media policy at the same time.
So, talking about the mandated reporting?
Mm-hmm.
Why do we have to wait for the legislation? Why can't we put the policy in place and then revise the policy based on the, the legislation?
We had that talk with Jay Barrows this morning about the legislation and the status of it, because we had Personnel Board tonight, and that's going to be one of the next ones we talk about. And he felt that when, because it's not new legislation, because it's amending existing legislation, he felt it was going to be more of an omnibus-type process, so that we might see something a little different. And I asked him that question, I said, we're looking to write a policy regarding this, and he said he felt like it might come back very different, and...
So, we revised the policy. I, I think to not have that policy is, is a shame.
Yeah. Well, that's the next one on our docket for Personnel Board after quarry.
I, I think of, you know, I think to not have that policy is, is ridiculous. It really is. I mean, to wait, to wait for legislation, we've been waiting, what, two years now? I mean, it could, it could be another two years.
This is an example, though, where we have done all the training for employees, we're waiting for...
Wait the policy.
We're waiting for the refresher course to come out and, and require a second round of training as well.
Okay. I, I don't want to wait for legislation, I want to get the policy, and when the legislation comes out, we'll revise the policy.
But I think there's, there's new training that's actually coming out, and it's coming out when?
I don't know, it's, they were exploring some refresher-type training, but I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
So, we baseline trained everyone who has...
Okay. Could we have a, could we have a policy based on the, on the, on the training that you already issued?
Yeah.
And then, it's easier to do the revision.
I think the policy's going to mirror more of that proposed legislation about mandated reporter, because the, the darkness-to-light training can't really build a policy around that, but the, I think it's the legislation was what we were going to use as the baseline, the, the thing that Town Law, Town...
So, you can, you can base the policy based on the, on the bill?
The existing one.
Base it on the bill?
Yeah.
And then you revise it, based on, on final legislation?
Fair enough.
That's the direction we're probably going in after the talk with Dave and the, with Jay, and then with your comments.
Okay. The last question I have, we've beaten this to, to death.
I want to beat it a little more.
All right. I'm glad, I'm glad you guys care what we do.
All these policies for new employee orientation, they, they get all this training as part of the...
Every single one of these, they get every single one of these policies, and then we have electronic, so for the people who couldn't attend workplace violence because police and firework, shift work, or, like, people, the whole library couldn't come, so we're either delivering separate training per department, or we have a link to, on, to a recorded training where they can watch it and sign off. So, we've done that with ethics, we've done that with sexual, with anti-harassment, and we've done that with workplace violence as well. And of course, darkness-to-light, you can either take a live class or do that online. So, every employee has the ability to view and take the training, whether they came and sat here or not. We, we made it mandatory, but there were buildings that couldn't close or whatever to do it.
All right. So, the document that we have, Town of Foxborough Employee Training Summary, some of these look like just trainings, and some...
Right.
Are obviously policies.
Yeah.
Can we separate the ones, take the policy ones that we have that are completed and get them on board docs in our library?
All the policies, yeah.
The ones that are completed, because there's only four in the board docs library of policies, and a lot of these aren't on there. So, I wouldn't mind seeing a document with what our policies are and what our trainings are.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah. The, this was being put together for a presentation we do with AdCom, just to kind of show them one of the, one of the five or six subject areas of HR and...
Yeah, but like, if you go to board docs, a lot of these that have been done for a while, the policies aren't even on our board docs to reference any of the policies, so it just...
Okay. But for people watching, our policies that have been implemented are on our website, so, I bet I'll get them on board docs for you guys.
That's it.
Any other questions? Thank you. And if you ever want us to deliver any other of the competency areas of HR, you know, just as an update, let me know.
Sure, you'll be happy to talk about it.
I know. I love HR.
She's passionate about it a lot. I'll throw it with her.
Okay. Well, we're running a little bit behind. Selectmen's update, obviously, we're all disappointed in what happened Sunday, but I think we could all be proud of the support that, that we showed. Again, Jim, and Linda, and Paul, did a great job. And there's always next year. Fortunately, we, we have high expectations. So, we'll see what happens. That's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
And that was a good turnout for the parade and everything, thanks to the rec and cable access for phone, everything was good.
It's your turn.
Okay. Well, again, I just want to add thank you to the, the community, to Jim, to Linda, to the, to Chris for reading the proclamation, who did a great job on Saturday, to Senator Feeny, who was our DJ, a good DJ extraordinaire. For two years now, he's done that, and thanks to him, and, and thanks for everyone for joining us on a, on a great Saturday afternoon. Saturday morning, rather, that was actually pretty cold, almost similar to what was going on in, in Minneapolis, but I think they were actually a little colder than we were. So, again, thanks, congratulations to the Patriots for a great season. We can't lose sight of the fact that they were the AFC champions again. That's, that's 10 times that they've, they've been the AFC champions, which is extraordinary in, in many, many ways, and that we have five Super Bowl champions on top of that, championships on top of that. I know the work isn't done, and I'm happy to report that Channel 5 is reporting that Josh McDaniels is not leaving. He's, he's, it looks like he's, he's looking to stay.
Again?
Just got it on my phone.
Just came out, just came in, just a second ago. So, hopefully, that will be the case, and it's a stunning revelation, but we're very pleased to see that happen, and glad to see, I think that the, the Brady-McDaniels connection is going to stay on, hopefully, one more year at least, possibly two, if, if that's the case. So, happy to see that happen, so good news, and congratulations to them. We actually, we took the flag down today, we kept it up yesterday because they knew, we knew they were coming back, and we kept it up for the day, but the flag has gotten a little bit worn and torn during the time it's been up there. So, I, I put a request in for a new one, and I'm also, I've also put in a request to see if we can get an AFC championship flag, which would be, would be, which would to see if we can get an AFC championship flag, which would be, would be, which would be actually nicer than even the, just the plane flag itself. So if that's possible, hopefully, I don't know if that's possible, but we'll see, we put the request in anyways. Couple things that, business-wise, I wanted to see if I could pass along, and Caitlin, can you have that, pass that out? That's that, the Plain Ridge Casino document, just pass it out to the board. I'm not going to ask you to act on this tonight, but read it over, and there is, I've actually circulated internally for the past month, asking everyone to see if, in fact, they have anything that they wanted to do with, with this money, if there was any reason why we should hold on to it. The impact from the casino has been de minimis to us, and it doesn't look as though any of the actions that we've, have incurred here in town have been, have required us to draw our own those funds at all. So Plain Ridge is following through on the requirement that they made when they first took the, took the license, that they would follow up in 2018 to, to see if, in fact, there were any impacts, and if so, the money would go back to them. It's actually being held in an escrow account, but I've asked with both Public Safety Operations if, in fact, there were any impacts that they could see, and neither one of them could come back with anything that would be worthy of consideration or drawing on this particular fund. But before I signed off on it, I wanted to at least have the board review it. If you have any concerns or questions, please let me know before the next meeting. I'll ask you for a vote at the next meeting to see if we can just, just sign off on this and send it back to them.
Are you reaching out to Paige, the planner and DPW director?
Yeah, we've already talked about it, staff, in that operations meeting, and we've talked to all of them.
When Chief Baker was here one meeting, didn't he say he was requesting funds from...
He is, but it's not out of this fund. This is, this is a separate fund. He's actually, they do have some mitigation funds that they, that they have been, in addition to this.
It was an opioid, it was a donation, $10,000 donation for purpose of opioid...
Right.
Epidemic prevention methods.
Which is more regional in nature, has nothing specifically to do with the casino itself.
So if nobody finds anything, this money goes away forever?
No, actually, it's, they've, they've actually left their door open to us. They said if, in fact, you do have an issue, then they certainly will listen, and they'll certainly take it under consideration and see if they can fund something. But at this point in time, that was the extent of the agreement that was in place at the time, was for a three-year period, and in fact, and so we're just, they're following through on that.
Would this stretch out to not physical impacts like traffic or wear and tear, but educational endeavors that we might want to do at the schools?
We'd have to go, I'll have to go look and see what provisions of that agreement were, but I, it says to me that it's more direct impacts, you know, as opposed, because, and we, bear in mind, we were the only community that actually had an impact fee. All the surrounding towns didn't get one, we're the only ones to get one. So I, it's, I think it was somewhat limited because of that, in scope, as to why, when they, when they put that in place.
Has there been the ability to determine if there's been more traffic going through Foxborough, especially the back roads, and it's a shortcut to the...
They can't seem to put an arm in that, and then, I mean, I'm sure there's, anyone can point to more traffic. I mean, I think, but whether it's specifically to the casino, very difficult.
We talked about that early on, doing a baseline study of, you know, they have it pre, and then compare it to post, during the peak.
My biggest fear living on Spruce Street, which is the back door to that, was the traffic when it opened, and believe it or not, we've seen decreased traffic. I think it's because of the way Route 1 is now configured.
Because we turned off all the streetlights.
Can we get a copy of what the, the original agreement, the escrow agreement is?
Sure.
Just so I can look at that, if you could email that out to the board, because it's referenced in that second page.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, because one of the, one of my things is where I want to just make sure we can leave it open in case all of a sudden that place expands.
Well, if they could expand, then they'd have to still have to come back to us, and so that would be a different discussion, because their license is only for that particular facility. If they expand that facility, then they have to go through another public hearing process.
Well, expansion of brick and mortar, but also expansion of...
Gambling.
...that it is that they...
Yeah, if they have different hotels and stuff like that, that's, that's questionable, but if they expand the casino facilities, then that would be the, that would be the issue.
Well, I mean, like, for instance, if we have this agreement in place now, I know where Boston Tropical, that is for sale, or somebody bought it, what if they put up, you know, a hotel or something where people might be using more of Foxborough Road, so just, I would like to see the original escrow agreement.
If, if they, if the development proposal was built on any one of those sites beyond Foxborough, then, or in Foxborough, I have to believe there's going to be some sort of an impact.
Yeah, but that's not in Foxborough. It's on, it's in Plainville, and I don't think we would ever normally have any say in anything.
Right. All right, I'll get you a copy of the agreement, because I, I don't, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's pretty narrowly written, but I'll, we'll certainly get it to you. And then also, I wanted to point out that we did do the, we're going to be doing a year, the year-end review evaluation next week, that before, it actually comes before the board, and to make sure that it's finalized, but the early indications are that it's, it actually tops last year's rollout, so I think you'll be pleased with what we're able to come up with. So, so that sort of leads into my, my comments at this point, to say that we are sad to see that Caitlin is going to be leaving us, but really happy for her, in the sense that professionally, she has, has taken on a new role in Town of Westboro as the Economic Development Coordinator, so we're very, very pleased for her, and sort of happy to see her progress in her career, her career aspirations. It's been a great run with her, and she's taught us all a lot, and we've all been very pleased with the work that she's done. We hope that we are helpful to her in trying to get and mentor her and teach her the ways of the world in municipal government and the process, but we had a feeling that she wasn't going to be here forever, because I knew she was, she was looking to try and grow the experience and actually move on and, and grow her career, so I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done.
Good luck, Caitlin.
Yes.
I think this is the first time she's spoken at one of my meetings, which has to be the hardest thing not to speak.
Pay close attention, everybody.
This is awesome.
If you wanted a spotlight, you can come and follow us up. You can go up to a lecture.
No, I just really wanted to thank the board for the invitation, being learning Board Docs together, I was here. You're going to do fine. And I also wanted to thank the coworkers here. I mean, I have your best coworkers, and one of the biggest challenges of making this decision was, was leaving this town, and every day I see them go above and beyond for the great residents of Foxborough, and for me, that only just reaffirms my commitment to having a career in public service. And I also want to thank Bill and Mary Beth for not only being mentors to me from when you first hired me as a summer intern, but also just creating a warm and welcoming educational environment in this town hall. I've been able to learn so much within a year and four months, and I know I will take it all with me to Westboro, and Foxborough is just a truly a great place to work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Caitlin, from internship to, can you tell what your, can you let people know what your new position is?
Oh, Economic Development Coordinator.
That's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Very appreciative. Thank you.
It's always been one of her, her major goals is to get into that line of work, so this is a good opportunity for her. Westboro's a great community as well. Jim Malloy, the Town Manager there, is a close friend, and he's, he's done a terrific job with that community, and they've got a lot going on there. They're in the, where they, where we're feeling it on this end between Boston and Providence, they're feeling it between Worcester and Boston. So they're really in a really strategically good location, and economic development's a really big piece of what they do there. So she's going to be working on some pretty interesting stuff. So congratulations, and look forward to you, to hear, hear some of your stories, war stories.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mary Beth?
I'm sad now. Well, we're really going to miss you, Caitlin. Thank you for all that you've done for us. We identified you as a superstar, and you've done nothing to ever disappoint, and just for everybody's sake, Caitlin holds two master's degrees, and we knew we weren't going to hold her in this position forever, and we're just really glad for the contribution she's made, and for, you know, your friendship and your professionalism. We appreciate that. So just quick update, as you all know, when we, all the contracts we've negotiated thus far, except for the two that we've got to complete, we have performance evaluations negotiated in. So now rubber meets the road. We're trying an electronic performance eval process. We're demoing software to do that, and it's been rolled out to all the steelworkers, so basically 60 people did self-evaluations and submitted them, and now the managers are doing their evaluations, and they'll sit down with the employees to discuss. We're working baby steps right now with Police Department on their performance evals. They're going to be doing the paper kind, but I've been training, meeting with the supervisors in small groups on shift to talk them through, you know, how to effectively do an evaluation and getting their feedback, and they're, they're really providing me with some great insight, and they've been very, very, they're very positive about the whole process, so that's great. As I said, we're going to be rolling out the revised Corey policy to you on February 20th. Personnel Board met twice, we've revised the policy, and we'll be bringing that to you. I will be sending you this week, I believe on Friday, some customer service questions to put on our survey. Just wanted your feedback, if you can comment or think of any other questions, because we're pulling that together to kick off next week, and I believe that's all that I have. Again, thank you for your attention tonight to my boring policy stuff.
One comment on the customer service survey. Keep it simple, and short, you'll get, you'll get more feedback if you make it, if you make it too cumbersome, people just throw it away.
Yeah.
We're trying to make use of the seniors, the senior readers out here as well, to do those, so we can actually get some feedback from folks when they come in the building.
So everything I've read said you should have about six questions. That's really the max. People will stop, won't want to fill it out, don't want it two-sided, all of that, so I agree. So I'll send you the questions, and you can tweak them if you want.
So the most important thing about the customer surveys is you take them seriously, you reward good behavior, and you discipline bad behavior.
Right.
Because if you're not going to do that, it's useless.
Right.
We found that out through experience.
And you know, in fairness, we've offered everyone the Customer Service Excellence Training, so they should be at the top of their game, and we anticipate rewarding a lot more than disciplining.
Action items?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $25 to the Council on Aging in memory of James Sheward from Anonymous.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $50 to the Council on Aging in memory of Raymond Mosher and Roberta McIntyre from Jocelyn Tripp.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a common victualer's license for the Raptor Restaurant Group LLC doing business as Mo's Southwest Grill at 265 Patriot Place.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve Steve's Lakeview Inc. doing business as Lakeview Pavilion, an early opening on Saturdays for 2018 at 11 o'clock.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you can run a order.
I'm going via the sheet, but is that different than...
Well, it might have been. These action items get updated from Board Docs? Looks like you missed number five on Board Docs.
Okay, yeah, that's not on, sometimes it's easier for me to read on the sheet. We'll go back to 8:05. Accept a gift donation in the amount of $300 to the Council on Aging for program, for a program with Patricia Perry, as, as agreed, from friends of Foxborough seniors.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. All right.
So there's two Mo's ones, which...
Yeah, I got the second one coming up next.
Wasn't that the same?
I'm sorry?
No, they did two different licenses.
There's a Mo's at...
Both says common victualers.
Yeah, one's at Patriot Place, the other's at Foxborough.
Oh, okay. I get you.
Move to approve a common victualer's license for the Raptor Restaurant Group LLC doing business as Mo's Southwest Grill at 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Unit 410.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a seven-day entertainment license for Raptor Restaurant Group LLC doing business as Mo's Southwestern Grill at 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Unit 410.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $500 to the ACO for services from Anonymous.
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. We'll do them one at a time. Move to approve the 1918 Board of Selectmen Minutes?
Second. Motion made, second. Under discussion, I'm going to recuse myself because I was ill. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the 11618 Board of Selectmen Minutes?
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the 12318 Board of Selectmen Minutes?
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the 12318 Board of Selectmen Minutes?
Second. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I think item 809 got overlooked. That was, you actually approved a brunch license for them for, for just one, was it one Saturday or one Sunday?
On Sundays.
On Sundays, okay. So this one's on for Saturdays.
Yeah, I get, they do this every year, but...
I thought you read that.
I did. I did it out of order.
Oh, I apologize.
I think the written ones are out of order than the ones on the list. That's why it looked like I skipped some.
I apologize.
But they were here, in just a different order.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Just trying to keep everyone awake.
Yeah.
That's right. Wait me.
I have a motion to exit regular session and go into executive session.
Can you need to read the reason why for both?
I'll read the reason why.
Conduct strategy sessions?
Conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation for contract renewal with non-union personnel, Finance Director Randy Scollins, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiation amendment with non-union personnel, Police Chief William Baker.
I'll say so moved.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye.
You need to, you need to...
Oh, not yes.
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 Thank you.
But don't we have to say, then we have to come out for purposes of adjournment?
Yeah, you do not, you do not reconvene in an open session.
Yeah, we're not going to come on.
So you can just say, then, the meeting will not be reconvened in open session.
Meeting will not be reconvened in open session.
Thank you. Nice echo.
All right.